Hello everyone, good evening Beijing and good noon Roma. Welcome to this session. I'm Lu Taizhou from Beijing Institute of Technology China. I'm very pleasure to be the chair of number eight special session. The topic of session is energy and the carbon market. As we know, energy security. Energy, energy security includes not only energy but also environment security. The climate change are global issue. And the carbon market is one of the most efficient way to reduce carbon emission. And has a strong relationship with the energy market. So we hold on the special session of energy and the carbon market. To analyze the rule between the two markets and the study the regular, uh regularly of energy development and the carbon emission reduction. There are four outstanding young scholar in this session. Uh Jie Ying Zhou, she comes from Shenzhen University, China. Zepin Hu, she comes from North China Electric Power University. Haiying Liu, she comes from University of Science and Technology Beijing. Rui Xiang Qiu, he comes from Beijing Institute of Technology. Welcome. First, let's, let's welcome Ms. Zhou bring us her speech. Her research interests include environmental economics, carbon market and the carbon emission allocation. Today, her speech is entitled as allocation of China's carbon emission allowance considering regional carbon transfer. Please, Ms. Zhou.
Um hello professors and scholars. It is great honor to share my research on AIE today. My name is Zhou Jieying and I'm a graduate student major in management science and engineering at Shenzhen University in China. Next, I will share my research with you. Allocation of China's in the provincial carbon emission allowance considering regional carbon transfer and industrial heterogeneity. Global warming caused by carbon emission has been one of the most serious problem we write. Frettering the natural ecosystem and the survival and development of human beings. As one of the world's major carbon emitters, China is taking active measures to deal with global climate change. In 2020, it announced the double carbon goals of reaching the carbon emission peak by 2030 and achieving carbon neutrality by 2060. The carbon market is an effective tool to achieve carbon emission reduction. It can make the carbon emission right, uh tradable commodity and allow the cost of carbon emission to be directly reflected in the profit of enterprise. Thereby, promote prompting the enterprise to adopt technological innovation and more efficient eh efficient operation to reduce carbon emissions. The allocation of carbon allowance is the premise of implementing carbon market transactions. However, how to rationally allocate the carbon allowance in China's provinces? Provinces with huge diff- the difference, um differences in resource endowments and economic development has always been a hot topic in the academic circles. Based on the above background, the research will be carried out in the foreign parts. We feel and research goal, research framework, data and methodology, research results and analysis and conclusion. To consolidate the common but differentiated responsibilities, the current CA allocation at the national or regional level is generally conducted based on the principles of fairness and efficiency. The principle of fairness emphasize that everyone has the same rights to pursue a high standard of living. It includes criteria such as historical responsibility, emission reduction capability and grandfathering. The table on the left shows the, um shows the interpretation, calculation indicators and operational rules of the different criteria. The efficiency principle, on the other hand, emphasizes the maximizing the uh emission efficiency of the whole society. Indicating the regions that generate more outputs with fuel emission should get more allowances. The allocations under the emission efficiency are thus generally based on the indicators that measure the national or regional production efficiency such as carbon emission intensity or DEA based efficiency measurement values. In terms of CA allocation methods, there are index methods, gain, gain theory methods, optimization methods and miss methods. Among them, the index methods that can, that can synthesize multiple indicators for CA allocation has been widely used in, has been widely used because it can take multiple principles into account and has strong interpret, inter, interpretability. How to taking account multiple principles is the focus of this field. At present, the most common method is to use the method of entropy weights to construct composite indicators. Because it eliminates the subjective preference of decision makers and it's easy to operate. It is favored by many scholars. The essence of this entropy weights method is to measure the importance of indicators according to the difference between regions, which is suitable for comprehensive evaluation of multiple indicators. Um however, it completely separate the relationship because each allowance allocation indicator and carbon emissions. And impress that the weight of each indicator in the same, is the same in different regions, which may not be consistent with reality. The great correlation analysis method can better solve the problem of heterogeneity of index weights. It is often used to quantify the degree of influence between factors. In the study of carbon emissions, great correlation and analysis is often used to quantify the degree of influence of various factors on carbon emissions. Therefore, on the allocation of CA, this paper use the great correlation model to quantify the influence of various factors in different regions on carbon emissions. And then construct composite indicators and determines the carbon emission quarters of each province. There are obvious differences in the development, development level and contribution of three major industries in China's economic. When formulating China's carbon emission quarter, it is necessary to take into account the imbalance of economic development. Um carbon emission mainly comes from the industrial process of the secondary industry. The use of fossil fuels, the products of the secondary industry are also the basis for the development of the tertiary industry. Therefore, based on the consumer payment and coordinated emission reduction. When formulating CA allocation planning, not only the CE produced by fossil fuels in industrial process need to be considered. But also the potential transfer of carbon dioxide due to the hetero, heterogeneity of industrial in different regions. Therefore, this study added the principle of regional coordination in the design of composite indicators. Um, the picture shows an overview of carbon emissions in China's provinces in 2021. The orange line shows the total CE of the province. The blue line refers to the C considering the power transmissions and the gray rectangle shows the difference between the two. A positive value in the, uh of the gray rectangle indicates that the province has electricity input and is to bear the corresponding part of carbon emissions. Based on the idea of consumer payment, the carbon emission of each province in this research framework take into account the carbon emission transferred through electricity transmission. Uh we decide a multi indicator CA allocation framework based on the hetero, heterogeneity of the regional industrial developments and the principle of consumer payment and set the principles of fairness, efficiency, sustain sustainability and coordination. Then combined with China double carbon targets based on the idea of synchronous, synchronous changes with CE. The great correlation coefficient, coefficient method is to, uh is used to allocate CA to each province in China. At the same time, this study compares the allocation method that does not consider the principle of coordination and also compares it with the entropy weight method that is widely used in the calculation of carbon quarter weights. We use to tone better carbon emission efficiency as an indicator of the efficiency principle. Calculate the carbon emission efficiency of the, of each province in 2021 to 2030 by super efficiency SPM undesirable model. Using energy consumption, population and fixed asset investment as inputs, GDP as the desired output and the net carbon emissions as the undecided output. Calculate the total factor carbon emission efficiency of each province from 2021 to 2030. The greater the efficiency value, it indicates that the region can obtain more decide, decide outputs and less than decide outputs and with less input. The great correlation degree can reflect the simultaneous trend, 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 trend of different indicators. Taking carbon emissions as the reference sequence and other indicators as the comparison sequence. The gray, the gray correlation coefficient, coefficient is to, is calculated by quantify and the degree of synchronous change between the reference sequence and comparison sequence. The, the correlation coefficients reflect the degree of influence um of the comparison sequence on the reference sequence. And the closer its value is to one, the greater the influence of the comparison sequence on the reference sequence. Um through the great correlation coefficients of each indicator, the provincial proportion of CA is obtained. Um, the carbon emission is calculated based on the, on carbon dioxide produced by the consumption of fossil fuels in various industry in its province. And then the carbon emission of each province are predicted based on an annual growth and annual growth rate of two percent. Given that the, given that China's current ways of controlling total carbon emissions is mainly to restrain its carbon emission intensity. We predicted the total carbon emissions in the future based on the downward trend of China's future CI. Then we predicted the future GDP of the whole country according to the government work report. Um and the China microeconomic foreign data. We predict the future CI of the country according to its relative, um country goals. Uh is the result of the total factor carbon emission efficiency. Um which will be substituted into the calculation as an indicator of the efficiency principle. The great correlation coefficients of each index in each province in 2021 to 2030 are calculated through the great correlation model as shown in the figure above. Um for, from the perspective of indicators. There are differences in the degree of correlation between different indicators and carbon emissions. Among them, the indicator with the highest great correlation values is, is population followed by total uh total factor carbon emission efficiency and the proportion of thermal power generation. Heilongjiang, Liaoning and Jilin are with a relatively high correlation value of population and carbon emissions. From the regional level, there are differences in the great correlation value at different indicators in most provinces. As for Beijing dominated by finance and service industries, its proportion of the um tertiary industry is significantly higher. The weights calculated by combining China's carbon emission targets and great correlation coefficients are used to obtain the CA of each province in China um of 2021 to 2030. China is expected to peak its carbon emissions in 2030. In terms of CA allocation, the, uh the allocation of each region is increasing year by year. Since Sichuan and in the Mongolia are, are the are allocated with the most CA and the least are Shanghai and Beijing. According to the situation of the carbon emission space of each province, the C space of the thirty provinces can be divided into five levels as shown above. Uh specifically, the areas with serious emissions bill overs are mainly energy intensive on ecological fragile areas such as Shandong, Jiangsu, um Hebei and in the Mongolia, which are, uh which are rich in energy resources and have a huge economic scale. The local production structure is dominated by industry which can easily become a popul- population uh which can easily become a pollution heaven for other energy poor areas. The bar charts above shows the CA distribution rates based on three different methods. This paper proposed CA allocation principle considering industrial coordination combined with the great correlation model compared with the allocation method B of the entropy with method under the same allocation principle and the method C with, without the principle of industrial cooperation under the same method. Method A compared with method C, about seven hundred million turn CA quarter is optimized. And compare with method B in, it optimized about one hundred million turn CA, which proved the, which proved effectiveness of the proposed CA allocation method. This paper proposes the idea of measuring and importance of quarter indicators with the synchronous change degree with carbon emissions. And we distributed, we distribute the CA of various provinces in China. Firstly, the heterogeneity of regional industrial, industrial development is considered in the allocation indicators and the industrial um synergy indicators are included. Secondly, the great correlation and, and this, analyzed method is used to calculate the synchronous change degree of each indicator and carbon emission in each region. So as to obtain the weight of each indicator in each region. Finally, the CA and emission space of thirty provinces and regions of China from 2021 to 2030 were calculated. The results show that the population and TFC indicators have a strong correlation with the carbon emission of various regions, therefore giving a higher weight. The regions with the most CA include Sichuan and in the Mongolia and the regions with the DCA include Shanghai and Beijing. The surprise and the, analyze found that Yunnan, Qinghai have most carbon emissions based surprise. The allocation of CA in the central provinces is relatively reasonable. The four provinces, including Shandong and in the Mongolia, are in a more serious overflow state and will have to bear heavier pressure on emission reduction in the next ten years. This study also has shortcuts. First, um the calculation of net carbon emission based on electricity transfer does not take into account the different source of electricity. Secondly, we lack of the process forecasting. Um, in the future, it is necessary to further improve the allocation indicators and use a more suitable method for CA allocation based on regional development differences. Um it comes to the end of the report. Thanks for your listening and attention.
Okay, eh thank Ms. Zhou for the excellent speech. Uh we will remain ten minutes for Q and A after all presentation. Uh everyone can leave question on the chat. As we know, the allowance, uh, uh carbon emission allowance is an important base of the, the carbon market. So Ms. Zhou did, uh, and eh eh her, eh, eh, her supervisor eh do a good job for the, this problem. And the next eh president is Ms. Hu. She comes from North China Electric Power University. Her current research interests include the energy economic and the power system optimization. Today, the topic of her speech is peak load shaving cave issues and the strategies of high proportion renewable energy power system. Please, Ms. Hu.
Okay, thank you. I will share my work. Uh hello everyone, I'm honored to have this opportunity to uh sorry. I'm honored to have this chance to share my work with you. I come from North China Electric Power University. The title of my presentation is Peak Load Shaving Cave Issues and Strategies of High Proportion Renewable Energy Power Systems. Firstly, I will I will introduce the sixth part of my work. Firstly, I will introduce the uh background of this work. Secondly, I will introduce the strategies of solving peak shaving problems. It including power side picking, deep peak shaming work market, energy storage system, demand side management. In the end, I will give some advice. Firstly, we will come to the introduction section. Power supply structure has undergone tremendous changes with the increasing proportion of renewable energy in the power system. The high randomness and the uncertainty of the output of renewable energy cause problems increasingly prominent such as a demand power system peak shaving resources on both power supply and the load side. We all know, the current power system implements the integration of source, network and the storage and the load. With multiply resources on the source side coordinating and complementing each other to give foreplay to the advantages of various resources. At the same time, inter-regional and inter-provincial dispatching have become an important mean to elevate the current picking regulation dilemma. On the demand side. Multi types of demand side resources participate in demand response, including interruptible load, curtail table load and electrical vehicles. With a participate of multi types of resources in picking. The establishment of a market for pick side acceleration service is crucial to help safeguard the issue with anthem and the fairness of picking. Therefore, I will, I think it should from a C, uh four part to solve the peak load shaving problems. Firstly, complementarity and the diversity of power sources. Secondly, development of auxiliary, uh secu- uh secondary picking service market. Secondly, energy storage system. Finally, demand side management. Firstly, I will introduce the power side picking. It include multi-energy complementarity and the deep picking. I will introduce the multi-energy complementarity first. In electric system, there are many varies of wider of resources, is including white power. So solar power, hydropower, nuclear power and thermal power and gas turbine. Firstly, I will introduce the advantages and disadvantages of this resource. We can see the wind, solar and hydro nuclear power have low marginal cost. And, uh, and the hydropower had a mature technology, but uh they have anti-picking characteristic characteristics and the high randomness and volatility. And the higher, uh highly influenced by the geographical location, season and the climate. The thermal power have the government support and it had a faster regulation and uh small and highly exiting toward the installed capacity. But it have a, uh, carbon emission issues. The gas turbine had high marginal cost and the small equipment capacity and the flex be, or flexible or operation. The main picking units are nature gas units and the thermal power units. The characteristics of China energy endowment are more coal and the least gas. And the, and the gas is dependent, depend the on imports. Therefore, uh gas should be used for deep picking while the thermal power units should be mainly used for coneneration and supplement with carbon capture units to reduce carbon emissions. We can see from these pictures, the gas turbine should to, uh, should to deep peak shaving and the thermal power can, uh would be, uh improve, would be supplies a thermal and electric. Uh in, in another hand, the crossload picking is a important, uh is an important method to a deep peak shaving. From the deep shaving, uh deep peak shaving section, I will introduce the background first. The increased proportion of installed renewable energy uh use more access space. So for exploration of the downward adjustment of the reverse space. Deep peak shaving is the three types of units together provide the peak auxiliary service. First, thermal power units. It will be, it will from a main power source to regulating power source. Second, gas units, uh in the uh it will combine the heat and the power generation, but uh it will to But uh it will to uh peak shaving units. Uh third is conservating solar power plants. It will uh supply thermal storage and uh peak shaving and the peak shaving. Uh the three types of units will providing reliable capacity and the peak regulation auxiliary uh surveys. The deep peak shaving will include the two steps. Firstly, deep variable load peak and secondly, start stop peak. And unit deep picking profits and the cost are showing the figure. We can see uh the benefits include annual of power generation, peak regulation completion, and the cost and the loss, including peak regulation additional annual loss, additional environmental cost, wear and tear cost, additional coal and conception conception cost of power generation. We can see the cost of the units is greater than the profits. So, we should to uh improve the picking auxiliary service market. In the deep picking, in the deep picking market. In the picking market, the deep picking shaving market distorts the market price relationship to a certain extent, which tends to lead unfair competition and overcompensation issues. The integration of high shares of the renewable energy. Uh it uh well, it uh have two problems. First, lack of the flexible power supply and the second is renewable curtailment. We should to uh we should to improve a deep peak shaving. And the fixed cost is accumulated for picking and the variable cost uh participate in the power market. The specific picking process including the following. The peak competition uh the peak of a deeper peak shaving market include uh provide information is including transaction declaration and the day hand schedule plan. And the second is deployment out of clearing. It include clearance model, real-time dispatch correction. And the second is market settlement and include picking combination and the cost sharing. Firstly, in picking combination, the picking combination machine is the picking cost sharing implementing a later type combination based on unit load factor. The cost sharing theory is cost makers pay the cost and the value creators enjoy the value. The fair cost sharing is the proportion of uh deep peak shinging cost paid by each beneficiary should be determined by the proportion. It shares in the total incremental value created by the deep peak shinging resources sur- service. For example, in the this system, the thermal power will uh have fair cost sharing like this uh like this picture. The cost sharing the cost sharing will include the output of various of the units. Energy storage system is another strategies to depict shinging. Picture is achieved through the process of charging E S S when demand is low off peak off peak period and the discharging when the demand is is high. And there are many where many energy storage. In the energy storage system, it look it including mechanical, extra- uh electrical hybrid and electrical chemical and the chemical thermal. The advantages of energy stories for picking are follows. First, replacing expensive picking plans. And the second, transmission and distribution system upgrade the fuel. Secondly, energy loss reduction. And the fourthly, economic arbitrage. And finally, reduction in emission, carbon emission. Lastly, is the demand side management. The demand response also an important means of peak regulation volunteer, including price-based price-based demand response and incentive or event-driven demand response. Firstly, uh price driver is both uh including time of use pricing, critical peak pricing, and the real-time pressing, peak time pricing. The incentive or event driving including direct load control, emergency demand response programs, capacity market progress, interruptible and curtable uh service, demand binding and the buyback programs, and the service market. It can also be divided into the transable loads and the reducable loads. The transfer the transferable loads can reduce the peak picking vary difference and improving the spanning reverse capacity of the conventional power units by utilizing the time of use electricity price. The reduced able loads can enhance the spanning reverse capacity of the power system by participating into the electricity market exchange. And we can finding the uh insensitive uh in- incentive or event uh driving demand response have some disadvantages. Firstly, customers may not be willing to shift their activities from peak period to off-peak period. So, it should uh establish establish reasonable time sharing trap. And the secondly, customers comfort level might be affected by the demand response. It should be step improve development develop smart home energy management system. Therefore, in summary, in order to improve the peak regulation flexibility of the power system, the following four aspects are needed to upper optimize the means of peak regulation. First, maximize utilization of various types of picking resources. It including uh accelerate thermal power flexibility transfer transformation and the electrothermal decoupling technology. And the building highly flexible power transmission lines. Second, promote the construction of auxiliary ser- service market. Promote the transition and the convergen- convergence of the auxiliary service markets to the electricity spot spot market. Accelerate the transaction of auxiliary auxiliary service transactions to a competitive market approach. Second, use distributed energy storage. Implementation of distributor E S S in the grid for peak load shaving to overcome the difficulties of large-scale E S S installing. And fourth, application of a smart home energy management system. This will reduce the dependency on customer willingness to implement the D S M strategy for picking shaving. However, to maximize the activities of demand resources, technology assistant education for the customer is required. This is the end of my sharing. Thank you for listening and welcome to your uh communication and correction.
Okay, thank you, uh Miss Hu, for the wonderful speech. Uh it's electric market is one of the most important energy pol- uh market. This is a very interest- uh interesting and necessary issue. Thank you. The next presenter is Miss Liu. She comes from University of Science and Technology Beijing. Her current research interest is about time series analysis and it and the energy mi- market. Today, her speech is entitled as, does market, does the carbon market affect risk split sp- lower between the energy and the industry stock market? Please, Miss Liu.
Okay, thank you. Hello, everyone. The topic of my report is that carbon price will fight the rest spill over the between the energy and the industrial stock markets. I will introduce it in the following four parts. First of all, the 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 resource background of this report is introduced. As as global warming worst, or growing number of countries including the European Union and China have set up a carbon matrix to save energy and reduce immersion. More and more scholars who are concerned about the development of carbon matrix and the linkage between carbon matrix and other markets. The carbon matrix is related to the an- to the energy and the stock markets. Therefore, it's necessary to study the relationship between carbon, energy, and the stock markets, which will enable policy po- policymakers to guess the ma- the market dynamic. In addition, it it provides support for investor to make investment performer portfolios. Moreover, when when extended event occur, they change the relationship between markets. It's necessary to explore the impact of sudden events on the linkage between markets. For the for the research between carbon markets and other markets, the the cu- the literature mainly focus on the relationship between carbon and the energy markets or carbon or stock market. But the the studies on the relationship between carbon markets and the stock markets at the aggregate markets level. Uh the studies have have investigated the relationship and the core movement based on various technical, for example, V R model. In additional, uh other studies have investigated the risk spill overs based on G A T model. However, the studies on this subject are mostly in time domain. Uh violent cohlers and B K models have been widely used to analyze the dependence and the risk spill overs between markets in frequently domain. Review review research, we found that fail little fail literature have evaluated the relationship between carbon, energy, and the stock markets at the level of segmental uh uh store in- industry. The uh the heritage the heritage January at the sector level is indispensable for for about the uh po- portfolio striders. In addition, due to the heritage generality of the market the producer is necessary to explore the risk the the risk spill over the between markets in frequently domain. Therefore, we we investigated the time frequently depend dependence and uh and the risk the risk spill overs among the carbon, energy, and the in- industrial stock markets. Uh ba- based on the blow and the analysis, we support our hypothesis. First, there is a strong, there is a, there is a strong uh hypothesis around the carbon, energy, and industriest automotives. There is a frequently domain uh heritage gen- generity. Uh the the crisis events in- infected the spill overs. We studied the relationship among the carbon, energy, and the stock markets based on our uh our framework. First, we calculated the return series. Then, the time frequently dependence are analyzed based on violent cohlers in order to uh explore the totally totally spillers, net spillers. And other indicated are calculated based on D Y and B K models in the time frequently domain. Finally, we provide the may collusion. In order to study the time frequently dependence, uh we analyzed the dependence based on a violent violent analysis. We'll we'll obtain violent coherence by by using the continued well transformer. Well, let's well, let's cohlers measures the degree of cor- correlations between two time series, which is uh stated as uh to repeat to repeated the direction of the core movement among the markets. We computed the violent face difference, which is states as violent face di- violent face different uh provides the information on change in the timeline, the relationship between the two time series. We introduced the the D Y model to quantify the time domain spill overs, which is based on the V R model. The V R model and it's generalized focusing a very deep decompositions are are estimate first, which is uh presented as. Next, we we introduced the totally spillers, directional spillers, net spillers, and the net appearance spillers. The totally spillers measures the contribution of spiller spill spill overs of short-crowned markets to the totally focusing area variables. The the directional spill overs measures the directional spill overs received by Martin I from all other markets. The night markets, the night spill overs are simply the difference between the shorts uh transmitter to and those receive from all other markets. The night paradise speed spill overs provide some provide some information about how much is markets contributes contributes to the vol- uh volatility in other markets in nineteen. In order to measure the spill overs in frequently domain, B K model is introduced to quantify the spill overs. First, we use forest transformer to get the uh impulse response function in frequently domain. Then, the violence decompositions in frequently domain can be stated as. Finally, the spill overs are obtained by using the introduced spill over index. Our sample data cover the present from twenty two to twenty twenty two. The data stay stays in twenty two, that's that's evolved the first phase of the E O E T S, which is a traveling phase. The data sample included the daily price of E O A per features. The data sample included the daily price of E O A per features and the three energy features of crude oil, nature, gas and coal. We also takes into account and the the starter, uh starter union six hundred in di- index. The figure one demos- demonstrate the time varying characteristic of the daily return series. Table two pre- table two provided the uh the uh this descriptive statistic of return series. The time result revealed that the return series are all stationary series satisfying the require requirement of the following analysis. The uh the figure two presents the correlation among the markets. We found that the correlation between carbon, energy and the industrial stock markets is relative high. We utilized the uh the vol- the vol- the volunteer coherence to explore the dependence. The hotter the color, the stronger the dependence. Uh, we can, uh, we found that the dependence around the carbon, energy and the stock markets is mainly strong at a long-term scale. The the carbon ma- the capital markets present low low co- coherence with the uh energy and the stock markets. Well, the dependence or the dependence between crude oil markets and the stock markets is related high. Besides, from a time domain past you after CO nineteen, the CO nineteen uh out- outbreak, which included the CO nineteen uh intensified the the dependence. We caught fired the risk spill over the base on a DY model of figure four shows the uh spill over result. We found that the totally spill over investor is seventy-nine point three percent in the time domain indicated that there are significant spill over in fast between carbon, energy and the stock markets. Uh, this find the can, this find the can support, can support our first hypothesis. Uh, the figure file provide the the night, the the night rest spill overs the result of uh each markets. Uh, we can find that uh the carbon, the the uh crude oil and the carbon markets are the main spill over receive. Well, well, the industrial pro- products and the service sector are the mainly night uh mainly night recipient of spill over in in the sys- in the system. Next, we focus on the risk spill overs at three, three frequently bands. Uh, uh. We can find that uh the the risk, the the risk spill overs of Mount Martyrs um are mainly trans- transmitted in the short run. Our second hypothesis is confirmed by the frankly results. We 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 construct the night paradise spill over network by a code diagram as showing figure, as showing figure seven. The the color of the uh the color of a fragment of of that of this uh of this valuable repres- represent the role of the markets in the system. Uh, the green, the green represented the night transmitter. The blue represented the night, a night receiver. We found that uh carbon markets is subject to higher higher risk spill over from uh energy intensive and the fi- financials in the uh short, uh medium and the long term. Uh, this indicated that uh energy intensive markets uh placed the domain role in the spill over network. To to account and for uh time variance below us, we we depo- we depolar uh rolling window, rolling window analysis with two hundred uh days as the rolling window size. We found that the the diameter totally spill uh spill over on the time domain and the different frequently best all present significant and the time varying characteristic uh during the uh European, uh European data crisis, uh Brexit and CO nineteen suggests that the major, the major crisis events have significant enhance enhanced the 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 rest spill overs. Besides, both the positive and negative jumps of the dynamic network risk the spill spill overs can be captured during the uh crisis, cr- crash uh predict such as CO nineteen as shown in a figure net. Our three hypothesis is confirmed uh confirmed by the uh din- dynamic spill over results. We we further investigated the uh paradise net spill over between uh carbon and other markets in figure ten. We found that the carbon markets have the weight impact on energy markets in the energy markets. The uh crude oil markets has a strong if uh influence on the carbon markets. Besides, carbon markets is a recipe the of net spill over from other sector in the stock markets. The energy intensive and the financial industries are most influenced in the spill overs of the E O A price. That's that's because energy intensive industries are the mainly player in the carbon markets, which in in which interinfluence the carbon markets around the demand for a carbon allowance. Besides, participate in the financial markets, hold and trade E U A in influence, influence the carbon ma- carbon price. The the robustness test of different window for totally spill over are gave are given in a figure and table file. The the obtain result are robust to the change of uh window less since there are similarly time varying characteristic. Uh, that's the result obtained in our report are robust and convincing. Uh, we draw several conclusion. Firstly, the dependence, the dependence among the markets is mainly strong on a long-term scale. Besides, uh, there are sig- there are significant spill overs in fast among the carbon, energy and the stock markets. Yeah, yeah, frequently domain, the totally, the totally risk spill overs of Mount Marty- Marty is mainly transmitted on short time horizons. Finally, the the major international crisis events have greatly intensified the result spill over. Uh, that's find the support our hypothesis. Thank you for your listening, thank you.
Thank you, Miss Liu, for the good speech and good work. Uh, it that is also an a attractive research, thank you. The next presenter is uh Mister Chu. She ca- uh he comes from Beijing U- Beijing Institute of Technology. Her his current research interest covers the impact assessment of emergency on energy market. Today, the title of his speech is Impact of Russian Ukraine War on Energy Markets, uh first uh forecast based event assessment. Please, Mister Chu.
Okay. Can you hear my voice better?
Yes, please.
Oh, yeah, Professor, it is my great honor to attend this report. Mister Jiang from Beijing Institute of Technology. The topic of my report is the impact of Russia, Ukraine war on energy markets for forecast based event assessment. I will introduce it from the following four aspects. First of all, I will like to introduce the background of this report. As we all know, major emergencies have a huge impact on the energy market. Most hierarchies and ma- and major public health events have all had a varying degree or impact on energy price in the past. At originally, at February, when the complex of the Ukraine break out, the Russia government was subjected to serve sixteen in the energy market. Russia is one of the world's largest exporters of oil, gas and coal, and the conflict has a major impact on world energy market. In this report, we take the natural gas market as a perspective to measure the impact of the conflict. The following is a letter review. Firstly, event assessment can be divided into three categories. First, interworking exercise is one of the commonly used methods for event assessment by scholars. However, since some variables cannot describe the precise of event occurrence, information loss is inevitable. Second, some scholar uses event study method in the energy market. But the but the but the event study methods based on the market incentives may effectiveness may be difficult to guarantee its success when the crisis occurs. And this method is more suitable for the assessment of short-term events, and it is difficult to provide a long-term perspective. Finally, some, some other methods were proposed by some scholars. For example, scholar Jap proposed the event analysis method based on E M C. And scholar Hua proposed the event analysis method based of production. This report mainly referred to the idea of scholar Hua. Forecast based event evaluation to the first import of currency or production. There are three main types of existing energy product production methods. First, economic models based on data linearity and data specificity are widely used in energy crisis forecasting. Second, the artificial intelligence method based on machine learning has strong nonlinear precise ability, so it has been widely used in energy crisis forecasting in recent years. And finally, the decomposition and reconstruction framework for forecasting framework can equal the robustness of the forecasting model as it can make for use of the other ones, it is or different type of model. Next, the research method is introduced. First, the research block diagram is introduced and the decomposition and the reconstruction framework is adopted for production. The natural gas price is decomposited into different components and they according to the information contained in the different components. It is reconstructed into noise, volatility and a trade term. Because noise and the volatility term has a virtually nine liner characteristic. For nonlinear artificial intelligence models are selected to product them. The trade item is a virtually liner and a Rema model is selected to produce it. The production result of this component are added together to obtain the trend or natural gas price in the world war with the Russia, Uk- Ukraine conflict. Finally, the difference between the export, the export natural gas price and the work for natural gas price is compared so as to realize the evaluation of this event. The decomposition method use a complete sample empirical model decomposition with adoptive noise and size, which can award the most in next year. Uh, effectively eliminate noise and ensure data alignment. And the reconstruction method named the simple in trip- triple. It is used, it is used to represent the amount of information contained in the sequence without considering the length of the date. And for the production model due to the state of the content, it will not be produced here. And for the event, we evaluate from two aspects. First, the impact of the conflict on the most is defined as a difference between the export price and the work price. Second, the impact of an event over quite a time is defined as average monthly impact over that quite a time. Next, empirical analysis is carried out. First, these thoughts are introduced. In this report, which was the natural gas future price of New York Metal Metal Gear Exchange as a result of that. This data is selected for two years. First, as the largest natural gas producer and exporter in the world. The U S natural gas market can represent the world natural gas market to some extent. Second, although Europe, Europe, Europe is the main importer of Russia energy and the Russia Ukraine conflict has caused a huge impact on the European energy market. However, in the content of Russia, Ukraine conflict, many statistics and negotiations has have taken place in twenty-twenty-two, and the European countries have taken numerous measures to ensure their own energy security. These measures were used to reduce large black stain in the price of natural gas in Europe in the short term. Therefore, we believe that the price of natural gas in Europe is suitable for variant impact or expectation and negotiation in the short term rather than for variant impact of Russia, Ukraine conflict. A major negotiate or share plot event on the world natural gas market from a long-term and a more perspective. The data selected for this study starts from May twenty-eighteen to November twenty-twenty-two. The date from May twenty, twenty-eighteen to July, to January twenty-twenty-two were used to as a training site to train our model. And the date from February twenty-twenty-one to December twenty-twenty-one were used as a test site to test the accuracy of the decomposition and reconstruction production model we adopted. The final product set is from January twenty-twenty-two to November twenty-twenty-two, which is not only the time period when the complex between Russia and the U- Ukraine occurs, but also the time period when we want to get the work of work through the production. After determining the time series to be studied, we performed the C E M G A A decomposition of this area. And the decomposition result was shown in the figure. The original sequence was decomposited into six components, which represent a different degree of information in the original sequence. Which represent a different degree of information in the original sequence. We are to assign different economic economic means to the components. The physical components were inductively reconstructed. Here we refer to the method proposed by scholar Hua, scholar Li. To calculate the simple in period in in triple or with component. The component with the largest simple in triple is defined as a noisy term. And the component with the smallest simple in triple is defined as a trend term. And the reminding components are added together to form the valerity term. The figure shows the result of the decomposition and the construction of the original natural gas price. It can be seen from the figure that the original natural gas price is decomposited into a trend term. That read slowly, a noise term that reflects around the zero mean and the over learned term. We believe that even without the occurrence of Russia current conflict, the volatility term or natural gas price will still exist. Therefore, we plan to use historical information to product the. Three components of gas price in twenty twenty two and the builder of work for what result of conflict. The natural gas price in the test site were productive. At the same time, the most suitable production model is selected. From the nine liner model to productive the noise term and the over learned term. The results show that for noise term, the red forest model has the best productive performance. And for valerity term, the the support of regressive model has the better productive performance. For trend term, we only put a Rema model for production and the result were various experience. Finally, the the decomposition and reconstruction frame clock. Frame work is compared with several single bit marks production models. The results show that the decomposition and reconstruction framework with the idea of remote and compare. As better productive performer compared to the nine liner. Base mark model arena, the M A P O D. So this B and R method decreased about thirteen percent. M A P is also a significant improvement over the nine 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 liner benchmark models. All of these are indicative of the occurrence of the forecast for you. Next, we explain the simple and the product that if there is no complex between Russia and. You courage the price of natural gas in nineteen twenty twenty two will slow. They are show a slow grid trend rather than a suffer rate and suffer like this in energy. Finally, the impact of the Russia recurring conflict on the gas market is appreciated. The result show that for a single month, the Russia. You curry conflict had the biggest impact on the gas price in June and September. However, the impact of this conflict only began to be slight in May. Overall, the conflict led to an average increase of around twenty two. Percent in gas price in twenty twenty two, taking short world to the world gas market. In the end, we come to full conclusion. First, compared with the benchmark models, the decomposition and the reconstruction model show better performance. In the metal step gas price production and the M A P decreased by about twenty percent. Thirty percent. The influence of Russia, Ukraine conflict in different mo- months is. He's a governor for a single month, the Russia, Ukraine. Conflict had the biggest impact on gas price price in June and September. From the average impact, there is a centralized and the impact of the conflict will not be clearly shown. Until May twenty twenty two. Overall, the Russia, you cur you current conflict for the gas price to write about thirty percent in twenty twenty two. Thank you for listening, that is my report.
Thank you, Mister Q. Uh for the excellent speech. Uh we have four different contents around uh uh eh energy and carbon market. Everyone do did a very excellent work. Uh is there any question we can discuss?
Professor, I would like to introduce some questions.
Okay, please.
Oh, I want to ask Miss Liu. Or I want to know about then. I want to know about about the knife belt over. Could you please do more about it?
Uh, thank you for your question. Uh the the night the night spill overs are the difference between the spill overs transmitted to and those. Uh received from or other matrix, the night spill overs induced of the markets. Uh greater than zero means the night transmitted. Otherwise, it indi- it indicated the night recipient in this system.
Thank you. Oh, I have another question from Mr. Hu.
Okay, thanks for your question.
Oh, I welcome why D D P for the thermite. Uh when I saw the demand. Uh the demand is the demand framework. And and. Notice you told that D D P for the thermite, why you told this? In this paper.
Uh I think the demand response can cut uh curtail to the load. It can be a deep shaving. And it can be a deep shaving uh strategies.
Oh. Okay, thank you. Hmm I also have a question for the Mr. Zhou. Do you have my word?
Uh please ask your question.
Oh, I want to know about the grandfather principle of the. Maybe you know more about it, when the father principle.
Uh in my research, I didn't use the grandfather principle. Um but it just uh for. Hmm. It can use the carbon emission of the last year um as a positive indicator for the next year. Um carbon emission allocation. But I didn't use this principle for my research.
Okay, thank you. I have no question.
Okay, thank you. Eh I have a question for the Mister Q, Mister Chu. Eh eh could you tell us how much? The the war, we will, how much will the European pay for the war? Totally?
Oh, I only.
Do you get the results?
Oh, oh from my report, I'm. Know of the. Russia don't current conflict has an impact on the U S natural gas market about twenty percent. Oh.
You didn't have the amount of the. You have the amount, you you didn't have the, did not have the amount of the oh uh the pain for for the war. In European?
Oh, I so because I'm. Uh in my opinion, the European market is for the short term matter. So I didn't select the European market for my this report. And this is a good advice, I will continue this for the future for for future study.
Okay, thank you. Any question?
Uh, Miss Liu, I have a question. Uh uh you uh you have mentioned the oil market have a extremely influence on carbon market. I guess uh it's a reason for uh oil price can influence the uh installing gas. Uh installing gas units, so it influences the carbon market. Uh I want to ask you if it's true.
Uh 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 can you speak again?
Uh uh you have mentioned that the oil car oil market influence extremely the carbon market. I want to know the reason of this uh connections. I guess it may depend on the oil price. Uh I don't know if it's true.
Uh.
Oh, maybe it's my problem, I can't uh.
Uh, thank you.
Okay, we all talk this problem, uh this question for the uh uh the the another. Uh chat uh. This meet eh it's time it's close to. Uh finish. Many thanks for our assistance, Mister Akasabu. And I also thanks for to A I E. So we have the chance to talk each other. And I will thanks for. A full standard outstanding researchers, thank you for your excellent presentation. And for thanks for the audience, our session is finished. Thank you, everyone. Have a nice day, Roma, and good night, Beijing. See you.